Good evening, everybody. The Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public hearing on November 14th, 2023, at 7:07 PM at the Newton Town Hall. First order of business is I would like to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to appoint Mr. Gibbons in place of Ms. Burke. So this is going to be a little bit of an interesting meeting. So Mr. Gibbons is in a butter to the 125 development, the last two things on the agenda for tonight, just to let you know. And for us to have a quorum, at least four members of the planning board have to be physically here in person. Due to illness, we have a few planning board members virtual, but they can't be with us tonight, unfortunately. Actually, since I've been on the planning board, the first time I think we have not had a quorum in person. We've tried to reach out to a couple alternates to get them to attend, so we will do what we can tonight. And as of right now, we may not be able to hear items B and C on the agenda, but we do have some information to pass along to you, just in the effort to keep things moving that Ms. Riedman will fill in. Jen, do you have anything to add to that before I continue?
No, I just think that we can at least begin the eight-lot subdivision that's not related to 125 development, and if an alternate is able to attend, it gives us a few minutes to maybe allow for that to continue. So I think if folks wanted to stay, that might be reasonable.
Thank you. So the first thing on the agenda tonight is Mr. Ryan Norman of Newton, New Hampshire requests a public hearing for an eight-lot subdivision at 17 Thornell Road in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 12 Block 1 Lot 4. Mr. Quintel.
So most of you are maybe familiar with this project because we've been before the board before, and plus we had a lot merger a few weeks ago. I don't know if this is on.
It's on, yep.
It's on? Okay. I'll try not to swallow it.
Can they turn it up for us by chance? Maybe?
Testing, testing.
I don't know if they can, sorry.
I'll try to speak loud, how about that?
There you go.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Ryan Norman is here tonight. I sent a letter of intent with the application, and you may have read that. The property is at 17 Thornell Road, Tax Map 12, and Block 1, and it was Lot 1, 4, and 4, 3, but those have been merged now into Lot 4 now. So it's really Tax Map 12, 1, 4. The three parcels were merged for a total of 29 over 29 acres. Lot 4, 3, which was the lot where the house is at 17 Thornell Road, that was .97 acres. Lot 4 was the backland, which has a 50-foot accessway along the east side of that house lot. And Lot 1 was a parcel that was owned by the town that was purchased by Mr. Norman. And there were conditions, and I'll go over the conditions quickly. First, that parcel cannot be, cannot remove greater than 60% of vegetation on that parcel. Second one is it cannot use that lot for calculations for house development. The third part was the subdivision conveyed a conservation easement to the town that would be on the westerly portion of the Norman land, and it was reflected on Exhibit A of the purchase and sale agreement. And the last condition was the subdivision would convey an access easement walking trail over the land that is not on the conservation easement. And so I've shown that on the plans, so that we could take a look at that if you need So the remaining land that's not in that town property, it was greater than 20 acres, proposed for development. So we were asked to obtain physical conditions of the site for development, and we conducted a boundary survey. We had GOVE Environmental flag the edge of wetlands. We conducted a topographic survey locating the wetland flags. And then we had GOVE Environmental do the high-intensity soil map that's required by your regulations. The upland soils were good, which are basically on the northerly side of the property, and there's a wide band of wetlands that crosses the middle part of the property. There's an access road that we needed to have to that backland property, creating a right-of-way. And the access for that would be right where there's two great big trees right at the edge of Thornell Road. The proposed name of the road is to be White Cedar Lane. So the access plan was designed, but didn't get into your packets, but you have a copy in front of you there that shows that there's plenty of site distance in either direction, and that has also been added to the plan set for your review. Thornell Road is a scenic road, and as required by the town, Conservation Commission has to have a public hearing. So we did that last week, and we received approval from the Conservation Commission to remove those two big trees. So the road will need to cross the wetland to access the rear of the property. We developed a conventional subdivision plan, and that conventional subdivision plan would have the required 60,000 square feet and 150 feet of frontage, and the proposed and also has the proper soil areas for six lots, and it would be a 914-foot road if we did a conventional subdivision. So with over 20 acres, we looked at the zoning ordinance section, I think it's 31, open space cluster subdivision. This requires a conditional use permit from the planning board, and it requires that you have to have at least 20 acres of land, and you have to have at least 150 feet of frontage. And so we have over 200 feet of frontage and over 20 acres of land. So there's a baseline density option, A or B, to follow. And so following option A uses a zoning formula disregarding the house lot and parcel A, which was part of the town property. And without the wetlands and the gas line easement, there's over 10 acres of land. So discounting 10% of that for roads, the area is over nine acres. And that now, and take that and divide it by the zoning size of 60,000 square feet winds up with 6.625 units, and the regulation allows rounding up. So that's how we came up with the seven residential new lots. Clustering these lots with a shorter road, the roadway would be 773 feet. Each lot would have 75 feet of frontage, and each lot would have greater than 50,000 square feet, be located around a proposed cul-de-sac. Each lot will have adequate area for well, buildings, 4K areas for the septic, and they each meet lot size by soil type calculations. They also will also meet state requirements. We proceeded to do soil test pits on each lot within the 4K areas, and those results are on Sheet 8. The open space calculations and lot size calculations are on Sheet 3, if you have those there on. I can turn to that quickly here on. Lot size calculations and the open space calculations. Following along with those open space requirements on this Sheet 3, 40% of the 10 acres, 4 acres, is required for open space. We've provided over eight acres of open space. There's 2.2 acres west of the proposed roadway. A lot of that is wetlands, but you still could use it for recreational purposes. In the summertime, it dries up pretty well. On the east side of the road, there's 5.8 acres of land that carries out over into where the gas line easements are. So out of that, out of the required four acres of open space, 25% of that is required for recreation, or one acre. We've provided over 60,000 square feet. And there's an acre, almost an acre and a half of land east of the gas line easements, where if the owners wanted to have that for some sort of recreation area, they could make a ball field out of it, soccer, or whatever they wanted to do. So we've provided an area for that. Drainage from the upslope area on the easterly side of the proposed road would flow toward the road through a culvert that would be underneath the road. It would be a 30-inch culvert, and we've done the drainage calculations and provided that to the town for review. The surface runoff from the roadway is, needs to be treated, so we've proposed to put curbing along the edge of the road as it goes down and comes back up toward the cul-de-sac, so that there would be all the runoff from the roadway, from the paved surface, would go into catch basins, be captured in catch basins, and then go into a treatment swale and a detention basin. And that information is also in the drainage calculations that we provided. So because of the unique characteristics of the site and looking at the slope requirements and the amount of wetlands that we do have to cross, we're requesting four waivers, and we have copies of those that we can talk about. And in the process, I did meet with the department heads, Town Engineer Mike Vignali, and I got the impression he didn't have any objections to the waivers that we talked about because I met with him earlier this summer. Met with road agent Mike Pivero. He has no objection to the waiver request, provided that the road would be considered a private road. So that's what we're considering, this to be a private road. The maintenance, plowing, maintaining the roadway would be done by the landowners that are there, that have an association that would take care of the road. I met with the fire chief. His requirement was that to provide a cistern or provide a sprinkler system for each dwelling. Those are what he's kind of provided for us, and so we're still talking about those options. So we've also prepared a wetland crossing dredge and fill application, and pending meeting with the state review agent, I scheduled a time to meet with him Friday. Provided, get some information, some questions answered from him, I can provide that submittal to the state. And as part of that application process, I have to provide copies to the town and the department heads for their review. So you'll get copies of that dredge and fill application as well. We'll also need to have state subdivision approval. On the site plan, you'll know, you may have noticed that we proposed to put sediment control around the bottom of the slopes of the areas where the wetland fill is, and that is on one of the layers that wasn't thawed out, so that'll be on subsequent plans. So I think that at this point in time, I think we've provided enough information that I'd like to think that the board would consider the plans complete enough to accept jurisdiction. We do have to deal with a conditional use permit, and we have to deal with the waivers, which I'd like to hopefully get a review by the planning board, because that kind of makes a difference on how we proceed with submitting plans to the Wetlands Bureau. Because the waivers are based on the width of the impervious, the impervious surface and the width of the wetland crossing. So I guess with that, that can, I can answer questions you have and maybe proceed with further discussion.
So I apologize for my hacking. Jen, do you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, I do think that the application is complete. You do need to take up the waivers, which are all related to the road. I would recommend dealing with that before getting into the conditional use permit. I will say this conditional use permit does not have particularly strong criteria to base it off of. It's just is the spirit and intent of this specific part of your zoning being met, so this project fit that intent, which it does appear to do, but I don't see any reason why accepting jurisdiction would be an issue at this point.
Barbara or, I apologize, who else is, both Eddys online?
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Andrew or Emily, are you guys both online? Sorry, I can't see if you want.
Yep, I'm on here.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions? No, not on my side.
I'll take those now.
I realize this is a private way. Did the fire chief sign off on the reduced entrance off of Thornell? Is he okay with that with?
Yeah, it's basically a straight road down through, and the concern is getting emergency vehicles to the lot. And it's a straight road down slope, so.
Yeah, coming off of Thornell would be my only concern, but it's kind of narrow, but he's all right with it then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Barbara had a question, she said.
Barbara did have a question.
No, I don't have a question.
Okay.
I thought she said she did, sorry.
So I guess that being said.
Anybody else know other questions? With that being said, I'm going to make a motion.
Or somebody.
We're going to take jurisdiction first.
I thought you didn't have enough people here to vote today.
No, we have a quorum for this meeting, for this hearing.
For this project.
We do not have a quorum for the agenda items B and C, because Mr. Gibbons is in a butter to that project. At the, we don't have a quorum at this point in time. I don't think we're going to have a quorum for that, those anyways, but once we take jurisdiction, I was intending to open this up to the public.
Well, I have a few points where I think we shouldn't take jurisdiction anyway, and I'll wait.
Jen, do you have any procedural recommendations on that, or?
Yeah, you guys should take jurisdiction before entertaining any public comment. I would also take, potentially consider taking up the waivers and offer public comments during each of those proceedings, or you could do them as one.
Sorry, can you state that again? You would recommend taking public comments for each waiver, correct?
You can do the waivers all at once or individually, but you need to take jurisdiction before you can take any public comment.
Okay, and we could take jurisdiction because it's technically complete, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
I will make a motion that we accept jurisdiction and that the board finds the facts concerning the application, that the plan falls within the scope of the applicable zoning and site plan regulations for a subdivision, and that justice would be served by approving the application. The proposed conditions.
Sorry, you're just accepting jurisdiction. You're not approving or denying the application at this point. So it's just that you don't need findings of fact to believe that it hasn't met the completeness test.
So Mr. Marshawn has made a motion to accept jurisdiction.
This is Barbara, I second that.
Okay. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Barbara seconded it.
Okay.
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn? Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, so we have a couple waivers to walk through. Do you want to?
Sure, I can read those. Probably the best thing to do is one at a time.
Yeah, why do we do that way?
So looking at the waiver request, Appendix B, Criteria 2.4, C would be minimum wave pavement width. So for the proposed White Cedar Lane, please accept this letter as a formal request to waive the subdivision regulation. Appendix B require a minimum pavement width of 24 feet, reduced to 20 feet. The reduced width will minimize the impact crossing the wetland resource area, and for a roadway with no outlet that serves seven new homes will result in minimal traffic use, and reducing width will minimize the proposed impervious surface on this development. And the roadway is proposed to be private.
Jim, did you have a?
Just none of your members on Zoom have these.
Okay. They have none of the waiver requests?
No.
That's fine, but I think we're, I think we might be good by listening to what he's explaining.
Okay.
Dennis, the waiver requests generally were also listed in the cover letter and leave on one of the sheets, if I'm not mistaken.
On the application itself, as well as the drawing set?
Yes.
On sheet?
I think it's the first one.
First sheet, I believe. Thank you. Does the board have any comments for the reduction in road width from 24 feet to a proposed 20 feet in the effort of reducing wetland impacts? Sorry for summarizing that for you.
Right.
Negative. And I'll open it up to the public, specific to that waiver request. I'm sorry, you have to, procedurally, you have to come up, state your name and your address.
Just clarifying. Floyd Woodruff, the 24-foot width, is that for a standard road, or does that apply to a private road as well?
So the 24-foot roadway width is the regulations in towns that, in town, sorry, that all roadways shall be at least 24 feet wide. Because the applicant is not proposing that this road is being, the ownership being transferred to the, publicly to the town.
Correct.
They're requesting a waiver to reduce the width.
Okay.
So.
All right, so it does not apply to a private road then?
So it applies to any and all roads in the community.
Okay.
But because the community, the town is not owning it, it, at least my personal opinion, it's easier to request a waiver or, you know.
Right, okay. I just wanted a clarification.
I could just add to that, too, that the fire department NFPA requirements are for 20 feet of solid surface for fire apparatus. And so there's going to be a minimum of 20 feet there and where the wetland crossing is, and the areas where there isn't a wetland crossing, there would be two-foot, there would be shoulder gravel, so there would be plenty of width to meet the requirement of the fire department. Just thought I'd add that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the public? Anybody online? Okay. And Jen, since we're doing these one by one, do you recommend that we approve or accept the waiver individually?
You can, they're all related. It's really up to the board.
Do you want to just do them separate?
Ken, if you want.
I have no preference.
Nope.
Okay. Why don't we, Mr. Quintel, next waiver, please.
Okay. Next waiver is Appendix B, Road Design Standards, 2.4C Minimum Shoulder Gravel Width. For the proposed White Cedar Lane, please accept this letter as a formal request to waive the subdivision regulation, Appendix B requiring a minimum shoulder width of four feet, reduced to two feet on each side. For a roadway with no outlets that serves seven new homes will result in minimal traffic use, and reduced width will minimize the impact to the wetland crossing resource area. The roadway is proposed to be private. So very similar to the previous one. What we're trying to do is reduce the size, width of roadway and the fill requirements, because we're trying to minimize the wetland impacts. So that's the whole goal here, really, of these waivers.
Any comments from the board on that? And the public? Seeing none?
The next one?
Yes, please.
This one is, again, Appendix B, Design Road Standard, Criteria 1.7. For the proposed White Cedar Lane, please accept this letter as a formal request to waive the subdivision regulation, Appendix B requiring a grade of negative 1% within 100 feet of the intersection of Thornell Road. We propose 2% for the, negative 2% for the first 25 feet, and then a transition with a 50-foot vertical curve. To comply with this regulation would require the proposed roadway to be, have an excessive height above the wetland, causing much more fill and disturbance to the wetland resource area. The road is proposed to be private. So this regulation is saying, coming off of Thornell Road, to go 100 feet at a negative 1%, which is just barely, just fairly level for 100 feet. And if you've been by that property, it does drop off significantly down to the wetlands. So to comply with this would require us to fill probably 50 feet high in the, over the wetlands, and that being that high and slope would be a tremendous amount of wetland disturbance. So in talking to the town engineer, he thought that that was very excessive for, especially for this development, and he had no comments or concerns about that. So that's what we're asking for, is just to minimize that 100 feet being almost flat.
To still flat.
Till, till, to still fairly flat. So you'd have one, probably two-car lengths that are fairly flat, but not 100 feet. There's really no need to have seven or eight cars in a flat, flat area they are coming out of that subdivision.
Any questions from the board? Nope. The public? Next waiver.
So the next one is similar in a way, that the proposed White Cedar Lane, please accept this letter as a formal request to waive subdivision regulation, Appendix B requiring a local service roadway to have a medium, maximum grade of 8% to 10%. To comply with this regulation, we require To comply with this regulation, we require the proposed roadway to be an excessive height above the wetland causing much more fill and disturbance to the wetland resource area. The roadway is proposed to be private. So with this here, as we come off the roadway for at least 25 feet, then start this vertical curve, there's a short section that is fairly uniform slope, that's 10% for about 100, 150 feet or so, and then it transitions to a different sagging vertical curve that goes over the lowest part of the wetlands. So if we go at 8%, that brings that sagging curve up higher, which would require more fill over the lowest part of the wetlands and more fill requires more width and more width would be more disturbance to the wetlands. So that's the request for that waiver. And the town engineer, when I talked to him about this, I wish he was here or wish I had his report, but he basically said that most towns are 10, minimum 10% anyway, so we're asking for that waiver.
Any questions from the board?
Nope.
That's the fourth one? That's the fourth one? That was the third.
That was the fourth.
Fourth, okay.
Yep.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I apologize, I keep getting stuck on the width of the road and the reduced shoulder. Is there any plan in place to stop people from parking on the street in the event that someone does? Can we get a truck down the street to a fire or ambulance or if somebody parks on either side, can we get through, you know?
I think you'll find that the lot of town roads, there is 20 feet or less, you know, in places. So, and I know that you don't like to have that, but 20 feet is the minimal width and that's the reason why NFPA requires at least 20 feet for a fire truck to be parked and emergency vehicles to go beside them or around them while they're parked.
So people can park on the street?
Oh sure. Yeah. But I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to do that.
No, but people do stupid things sometimes and then other bad things happen and then we can't get a truck down the street.
Well, the part that's the, where it goes over the wetlands is going to be, have curbs anyways. And where it's not, people, that's not where people's frontage is. The frontage will be around the cul-de-sac. And if people usually are parking, they'd be parking on, you know, they shouldn't be parking on the street anyways. But if they did there, then there's shoulder gravel, there's lawns and things like that where people could park and plenty of room to get around the cul-de-sac.
Chief's okay with it?
As far as I know. I mean, typically when we send in applications to the town, department heads have a chance to write letters to the planning board and recommendations, so-
Got it.
-if you have, if you have any letters from the department heads, that would certainly be helpful, but I haven't heard of any, any-
We haven't received any, so.
Okay. Any comments from the public on that item regarding the change or the, exceeding the maximum grades allowed by the current regulations?
Nope.
Anybody in the public, online, nothing?
So that's it, just those four? So a motion to accept?
I'll second it. Second was Keith. Thank you. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay.
Dennis?
Yes, Jen?
Just, I just want to make sure folks are clear that by Bob saying "accept," he meant granting all four waivers in that motion? Is that everyone's understanding? Okay, I just wanted to make sure because of the wording, right? I'd recommend that be reflected in the minutes then.
Right, thank you.
Just to clarify, Jen, that means we did not approve the roadway width, we've granted a waiver to proceed, correct?
No, you granted the waiver to allow the reduced width. So you just granted all four waivers.
Thank you.
You have not approved the final application with that.
That's what I was trying to clarify. Sorry, I did not word that correctly.
Conditional use permit, could we talk about that? That's what's required for the open space design concept. So that's what's required by the planning board in order to do this, basically a cluster subdivision, open space subdivision.
Do you have anything to add to that, Jen?
Yeah, because you don't really have, I'll say, any criteria for the issuance of this conditional use permit, I would recommend that folks look at, sorry, I'm on page 41 of your zoning, where it spells out the purpose of the residential open space. And just to sort of paraphrase, it says, "A flexible method of residential development for consideration along with sound planning principles. The intent is to maintain and preserve rural character of Newton to allow alternative residential development, which has options preserving large areas of open space, provides visual buffer onto existing roads, and permits farming opportunities on parcels, preserves large continuous parcels of open space, provides diversity of housing type, encourages road design that will contribute and enhance the rural atmosphere, provide connecting corridors of open space land, and as part of the alternative, requires the clustering of the homes." So those are the purpose statements. Those seem to be sound criteria to base the conditional use permit approval or denial based on those.
Okay, thank you for that. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, that's the whole goal about this, is providing open space around a subdivision and, but at the same token, providing lots size that meet your lot size by soil type requirements and still having areas for each lot to have a home, garage, septic area, wells, and access to and from.
Motion to accept conditional use?
You should open up a public comment on the conditional use permit.
Yeah, I was going to ask, does anybody on the board have any questions about the application? Barbara?
No, I'm good.
Emily, Andrew?
I'm good.
And at this point, I will open it up to public comment questions. Again, please come up to the microphone, announce yourself, state your address, please, for the record.
Hi, Sandra Esterbrook. Hi, Jen. Jen mentioned that it starts on page 41 of the zoning laws, it's section 102031 Residential Open Space Cluster Development. All the regulations, they go to page like 49 of all how, so I didn't know if we could talk about some of the other ones.
Sure.
So-
Can you pull the mic down?
Down, yeah, sorry. So it says, "Open space development shall," the planning board needs a conditional permit. It says that the conditional use permit shall be issued only if open space cluster development complies with all of the requirements of this section. So it says, "Conservation land is preserving the original ecological conditions." And then it says, "A mandatory housing authority for part of the open space land at the discretion" on page 46. It says, "The open space has to be managed by a mandatory homeowners association or a public body which shall be conservation land or public open land." So I don't know who's going to handle that. And then it also, for the unbuildable land on page 44, says, "The purpose of the formula for unbuildable land shall consist of the following types of land: wetlands as defined elsewhere in this ordinance or not so defined as found in state laws; slopes exceeding a grade of 25%." So I didn't know if there's any 25% grades on there that got taken out. And then the 100-year flood plan, which doesn't, it's not in a flood zone, so that's fine. And then on page 44, be under the yield plan and has a bunch of different stipulations that are supposed to be on the plan about the yield, how they get the yield plan. So I didn't know if he talked about that. Then standards for approval, all standards below must be met or impacts mitigated to the satisfaction of the planning board prior to the granting of a conditional use permit. And the permit is in compliance with ordinances of the public interest. And there's a bunch of things about that. And then the minimum open space requirement, it's on page 46. So minimum percentage of open space shall be designated as open space, shall be specified as below. Mandatory 40% of the total track after deducting the following kinds of unbuildables. So wetlands as delineated elsewhere in this ordinance, slopes exceeding 25%, land under permanent easements prohibiting future developments, 10, 100-year floods, not in that. And then it says that no portion of public utility easements of any kind may be considered as part of the minimum required open space. So he had said that the pipeline and stuff, but that already has an easement on it, so that can't be counted in the open space, I don't think. So that's a question. And then it says that open space shall be kept in three-acre kind of segments, that's on page 46. Says, "Open space shall be directly accessible to the largest practical number of lots. Safe and convenient pedestrian access to open space shall be provided from all lots not adjoining the open space. Land shall be preserved in paternity through deed restrictions." And then it says, "Shall be reviewed by town council and approved by the planning board." And then it says that the open space has to be held by a mandatory homeowners association or a public body, which could be the conservation committee. And it says that each designation must be made prior to the approval of the subdivision application by the planning board. That's on page 47. So. And then there's some frontage setbacks and some other setbacks about where buildings can be and stuff like that. And then it says, "Off-street parking shall be provided for two cars," so that might answer the thing about parking on the side of the road. Off-street parking must be provided for two cars and a minimum of one-car garage for each unit. So that's a few of my questions.
Mr. Quintel, so in the interest of time, I was under the impression when you were giving your opening statements that, you know, the area, the breakout of areas for conservation and other uses, you did define, but if you want to flip back to your sheet to kind of address, I know you have a table to answer some of this about the open space statements and I'm not sure if you were taking notes, but-
So in my presentation, I kind of reviewed that, but it's all in the plan on sheet three, addressing all the concerns about the areas for the open space cluster development, subtracting out the gas line and the wetlands. We have more than adequate area for open space, more than adequate area for access. The access would be for the open space area that's on the eastern side of the roadway, would be from the roadway along the southerly side of Lot 7, which I'm pointing toward the southerly side of Lot 7. Between that lot line and the wetlands, there's uplands there which access across the upland area to that easterly portion. And so that portion of the regulation is just calculating an area that can be utilized for recreational purposes and subtracting off the area for the easement. So we didn't take into account the easement area, didn't take into account the wetlands. And so all of that is on the calculations that we provide there and also providing the access to that area. On the westerly side, there's easily access to this area, and I'm pointing on the westerly side of the roadway, that area is still open space. A lot of it's wetlands, but it still can have walking trails through it like there is now. In summertime, it's dry enough to walk through most of that area. On normal years, this year was pretty wet, I mean, normal years, you can. So the calculations are there, been through it a number of times. As far as parking spaces for each lot, there's plenty of land on each lot, there's over 50,000 square feet on each lot, plenty of room for those. I think that the regulations are looking at for a cluster subdivision and clustering perhaps multifamily units or dwellings and providing, making sure there's parking space for each of those. But in each lot, there's plenty of room for parking on each of these lots. I mean, I hope that answers your questions that she was bringing up, but the calculations are there on the plans and they're certainly there.
There was also a few questions about, and I think you mentioned this previously, about HOA homeowners association on the intent is to-
It's all going to have, that's, the association's going to be part of taking care of the road, taking care of the open space. Anything that associates together with common use of this property would be dealt with with a deeded agreement for each lot as they're sold.
Okay. Thank you.
And obviously we'll be providing that for you to review.
Review, counsel. Do we have additional questions from the public?
Nope.
My name's Jeffrey Elche, I live at 11 Thornell. I just have a question about the easterly side for the open space of the pipelines. Is that not considered wetlands? I wasn't clear on that one.
We have it clearly defined on the plans. There are wetland areas where the pipelines cross. Those areas are open space, but there's areas around those, as you can see on sheet three, areas around those wetlands that is upland. So the easements were not used for calculating area for the open space, but the easements can be used if the association wants to make some sort of a, an area or a field or whatever. I have the gas line going through my property and we drive my tractors across it and we, grandkids kick their soccer balls around it, so I mean, you can use them for recreation. But the focus of this, the calculations are to not include that in the minimum area that you need for open space. I think that that's what I need to clarify. And so we have plenty of area to meet the open space requirement. How they use that in the future, that's up to the association. And if they don't want to maintain anything like that, they could just leave it as is. But they do have the area to utilize it if they want. And that's what the goal, I think, of the regulations is.
Thank you.
This is not, obviously, we can't see this in the audience. Is this on the website?
Yep.
Okay, so it's, is it clearly just a hyperlink or do we got to drill down? Okay, so it's, is it clearly just a hyperlink or do we got to drill down?
It is...
The updated one?
It's right on the top level. It's not the top because 125 Development has a few, but it's on the first page.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
So the bottom of my screen as it is right now, but... There's, Jim in the planning board office also has hard copies too, if somebody wants to come and flip through it.
Yep.
Do you have anything to...
I don't have anything more to add right now.
And that's just for everybody's knowledge, any application that comes in front of the planning board, it gets posted online a week before, two weeks, at least a week, three weeks. Thanks, Jim. Before it comes in front of the public and the public has the opportunity...
As soon as it comes in.
As soon as it comes in, it's usually a couple of weeks before. As well as any, all this information we have in front of us, it's available. Yeah, I think everything is on there. Do we have more questions from the public or anybody online? Jen, I saw you unmuted.
Yeah, but if anybody else has questions, I can wait a sec.
Okay. Are you?
Okay, just a couple of comments. I mean, obviously the conditional use permit is really central to the application. The board doesn't have to take it up this evening, but I do think some conditions of approval that would be reasonable for the overall application, not necessarily the conditional use permit, is for the homeowners association document to be established and reviewed by legal counsel. That's typically for this type of project. They wouldn't have all of the homeowners association documents drafted before an approval, so it would be a condition of approval after the fact. But also acknowledgement that whatever proposed use on the gas line easement and the homeowners association easement, that there is documentation that the gas line easement holder approves of the homeowners association easement, just to make sure there's no conflict. Typically passive recreation would be perfectly acceptable. That should also be a condition of approval.
Right, because there are new state regulations about the use of what you can do over the gas line easements, as we've already talked about in other meetings, correct?
Correct, but like I mentioned, the sort of passive recreation aspect shouldn't cause any issue, but just to have that box checked, to be honest. I would recommend that the board seek a letter from the town engineer just to review the road and the drainage calculations. I suspect there is not any issue, but just to get that verified. So because of that, I wouldn't necessarily recommend an approval, because you want to have a more of a clean application just in case. But those are my main comments. It's for the conditional use permit, but also for the overall application. I did go through Mr. Quintel's calculations, they seem to meet the ordinance requirements. So, just for verification.
Okay. Yes, Jim?
If you do grant a conditional use permit to allow for the cluster development, please add number four to the proposed conditions, and that is that HOA documents shall be supplied for a town council review and for recording contemporaneously with the plan.
At the registry.
The plan can't be recorded without the documents that give the assurances, just like the, at the same time, you also have to record the liability waivers between the developer and the selectmen. It all becomes sort of a package that gets recorded.
But it wasn't, it's not on your sheet.
So Jen, to clarify, we can move forward with the conditional use permit, but not approve the project until the town engineer has reviewed the drainage calculations, roadway, et cetera.
Correct. I mean, you can also hold off on the conditional use permit if you so choose. They both have to get approval for the project to move forward, so.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion just to approve conditional use permit?
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marsham?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I have a question before we move forward at all. How much money is in their NEPRA account? You know, off the top of...
Submitted whatever.
Honestly?
Was it $5,000?
Of which, I want to say probably about 500 has been spent.
Okay, I want to make sure that there's enough...
Oh, I think there's plenty.
If there isn't, I'll let Mr. Quintel know.
I just wanted to get that out there because I think we're going to ask town engineer to take a look at the drainage. So, basically, I don't want to hold that up.
Right.
Because there's no money to cover them. Okay, so, moving on. I think we are looking for the town engineer, KV Partners, to take a look at the additional You have a little bit of homework to do for the HOA documentation. Is there anything else?
I'll take a look at anything else that we talked about tonight and get any changes to the plans, I'll get them back to you.
This might be a good opportunity for any public comment for the overall application, just so that if there are comments, that might help move things along as well.
Okay. And why don't we, is there any more questions on the board on this?
No.
And I guess, so for the overall application, if there's comments or questions or concerns from the public that could be addressed or that you would like being said, please feel free to come up. Anybody on...
I was just, Denny said that it's up to the association later to say what open space is good or bad or what they can and can't do, but I'm reading this intent that that should be decided now, like what the open space is and what can be built upon or not, and then that's put in the documentation?
So that documentation, my understanding, would get reviewed by council and the planning board, Jen, is that correct?
Not indirectly the planning board, you want the town council to review it to make sure it's meeting the intent of the ordinance. I will say there is a distinction between the open space and the recreational area, so there are things that you would be allowed to do in a recreational area. The intent would be for it to be passive recreation versus the dedicated open space.
Right, because it says the dedicated has to be on the plan, submitted and deeded to the registry, what the open space is, that it cannot be built upon. Paternity and all that stuff.
Yep, and that would be part of the homeowners association documents as well.
Yeah, I'd just like to add too, that the areas that would be depicted on the plan that gets recorded as far as the open space areas. The area that, if, looking at the regulation further, is, it's saying to depict an area where recreation can happen. So I can provide, one of the sheets, I think it would be sheet five, I think, would show a hatched area that comes across the southerly part of lot seven and into this area that's across the gas line. I can show that an area, because like I said in the presentation, there's land enough there, there's an acre or so of land that can be used, not including the gas line easement for any type of a recreational ball field or something. So I'll show that on the plan too, as a hatched area that, and I think that's the intent to the plan, is to show an area where some recreational fields can be utilized. Whether the association wants to use that area or not, that's certainly up to them in the future, but I think it's important to show it on the plan, and I'll show that when I bring the revised plans in.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a, Diane Hare, I live on 29th Thornell, and I am a butter to the property. I own the wetlands that is down from this property. So it's been, I have talked to Dennis and Ryan many times, and my concern is water coming. I know they have a swale and I don't really understand the whole thing, but that's not where the low part is. So when we walked out there and looked at it, he explained what the swale is doing is just taking water from the road, I believe. So I just want to make sure, I want it on the record, that this is a, this is a wetland that I feel very passionately about protecting because of the Atlantic White Cedars, and it is an interesting wetland. So there's not many of them like it, and the town already lost one, so hopefully we'll keep this one. So I just want it on the record that I am concerned about how much water. And this year we had a lot of water, it never dried up there. I don't know if that's something to come, but that's my, that's my only concern for the board and whoever plans all of the drainage and everything, so.
And your walk-in trail.
And the walk-in trail that does exist, it's an existing trail that the selectmen conservation, we've done many walks out there along with Mr. Norman and Dennis have come out, and everyone was in agreement, it was worth protecting, and as much property as we can get to, you know, to help the water go into the ground and...
We're not going to have enough people because...
So anyway, that's...
One of the members on the board.
For everyone to know.
Present information to them about what needs to be done.
Jen has raised her hand.
Just to address the butter's concern, part of the application that they submitted does include a stormwater drainage report that helps to determine that the water flow off of the property will not be higher than the existing water flow to impart, address your concern about the wetlands and any issues that they may be having. And that's something that the town engineer recommended also needs to review.
So just to, also to point out, on the left-hand side of the plans, sheet three depicts the conservation area. That's the area that's going to be designated for the conservation land, which again wasn't used for our calculations. Also on that sheet, it does show the walking trail.
And that's existing?
There's a trail there now that it's kind of, when we were walking out there, was kind of in the wetlands, so we talked about the actual trail that we do make out there is going to be higher, still in the wetlands, but not in the wet, that's really wet. So instead of walking down slope, be walking up slope a little bit more, coming across by the end of the detention basin, and then coming back onto the conservation land where there is existing trail system. So the trail system would be, have, that's been there and used for years, will continue to be used, is what my point is, going across that first lot. And they'll be, that'll be part of the deed and easement and part of the agreement.
And that was part of your conversations with the Conservation Commission last week?
Yes.
And that was green-lighted? Thank you.
The actual location for that trail isn't defined there, but when we're actually out there, I'm sure we'll meet together sometime out there, and we'll determine where the best place for that walk-in trail to be around the trees and whatever to get. So we'll... Accepting jurisdiction, you have 65 days to review the plan, so.
Any additional comments from the...
Something different. When he bought the piece of land from the town, the landlocked piece of land, you said only 60% of vegetation can be cut or, so I was wondering if that piece is shown on the plan, like which lot that's in, and then who monitors like what vegetation is, comes or goes or whatever?
So I don't show that on the plan, but I can show that area, and it's in the back part of all of the lots, in behind lots, well, it'd be in behind lot two, three, lot two and three. And I'll define an area out there that is 60,000 square feet, and so that they, whoever owns those lots will not be able to clear those lots. I'll define that as part of the...
HOAs.
Change.
Can we make that a condition, that that be field marked prior to construction or clearing of homes? Did you catch that, Jim?
Sorry, no, I was writing something else.
For the future, if we get there, a condition of the approval that the conservation, limit of clearing be defined in the field to confirm at least 60% of the, that parcel is not cleared or however it should be defined based on the previous purchase.
I'll make it clear on the plans.
Okay. I was wondering if it could be actually located in the field prior to construction?
Sure.
Yeah, you could even put it in the HOA too, so that the affected people know not to do that.
Beyond the definitive plan, the plan gets, I think, gets recorded, so whoever's buying the lot will know that they can't clear beyond a certain section.
Yes, please.
It's easy enough to do.
Not that I've never seen somebody clear too much. Anything else? Did that help address your concern, Ms. Esterberg? Anybody else online? In the audience? So our next hearing is the...
Number 28.
Two weeks, enough?
Yeah. My changes of the plans, I can get back to Jim probably next week, is that time enough? Get those out? You can have them to me by next Monday, that would be best.
I don't think there, the discussion points would change Mr. Vic Nally's findings from a roadway drainage perspective.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, there's just some minor things that you just have to deal
So can I have a motion to continue this to the 28th of November?
Motion to continue.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
So that was Barbara and then Bob.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marsham?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
She said aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, sir.
So unfortunately, the next two items on the agenda, we do not have a quorum in-house because Mr. Gibbons is a butter and a few board members are sick. I apologize for the inconvenience. Jen, do you have anything to add? Can we provide any input at all?
I can give a couple of fairly high-level comments for the applicant.
Can you just hold on two minutes?
Yep.
Have a good night. Thank you for the comment.
Take care, folks.
Take care.
Okay, Jen, why don't you?
Okay, I'm going to take these a little out of order, if that's okay. I'm going to do C first and then B, so...
So the 44-unit subdivision she's going to discuss first, and just for the record, is tax map 14 Block 1, lots 1-1, 2, 27, 3, and 27, 6, and 27, 7.
So for that development, very specifically the updated roadway that was discussed at the last planning board meeting, I did respond back to the applicant's engineer, who I think is there, I thought I saw him pop in, about the variances they had sought from the ZBA, and I did confirm that I do think that those variances are correct for what they would need relief to be able to construct the roadway, some associated drainage with that. The other component is that I would recommend the planning board reach out, again, to the town engineer to review the changes that have been submitted, just to ensure that he has any, if he has any concerns with the roadway construction specifically. There were some items added to the 44 residential units, some landscaping, some other details that have been added and are noted in the response letter, but I didn't have any significant comments related to those.
Okay, and that was specific to the roadway adjustment pulling it north out of Plastow into Newton?
Correct, because that is a change to the plan. I don't think it will take him a long time to be able to review, but you should seek that.
Okay. Thank you. And then, moving on to Agenda Item B, which is tax map 14 Block 1, Lot 27, 3.
Yes, so this is a resubmital of the application that had expired a couple of months ago, or a couple of weeks ago, I guess. Just really, two big things are that the application we just mentioned is dependent on the four buildings and the associated roadway also getting approved. So just to make that connection clear, there are some documents with the four buildings that had previously been approved as part of their expired approval that do need to be resubmitted, such as some of the drainage, the height for geologic study that was conducted. I would recommend, because there have been so many moving parts with this application for the applicant, to, at the next meeting, bring a summary of any changes that have been made to the plan set from their previous approval. Some of those may be related to some of the state permitting they're seeking. Just, I think it may help the process move along a little smoother for the applicant, for the board, and any butters. So that's just a recommendation that they may want to take it under advisement.
Thank you. Did you guys get all that? I saw Barry, like, scribbling away. There's been changes since March. So just... Yep. Okay, and again, on behalf of the board, I apologize that we don't have enough people here.
One second, so...
We can't really discuss the application.
Oh, we can't, oh, I thought I could save them some time.
But you do need to continue it to a date specific, correct?
Yes, we do.
Correct.
So you're asking for a continuance?
Would you please ask for a continue?
Phase 5 hasn't been, Barry Guyer with Jones and Beach for the applicant, Phase 5 hasn't been accepted by the board yet, and neither has Phase 2, so the board is asking for...
So we'll ask for the continuance until...
The 28th.
28th of this month.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
That's too bad.
Mr. Masham?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I was reminded by a member to suggest that, since most of the members that are now seated on the board have never done a site walk on this property, they may want to continue that. Consider that.
Not a bad idea.
So that site walk cannot occur until you've accepted jurisdiction of...
I was just going to say that.
I just, it was something that somebody said, please remind the board, so I'm reminding the board.
Yep. Okay, so that's something we can consider on the 28th. Okay, so we can continue with board business now that we're not discussing that, and I guess you guys want to take off.
So thank you for coming, sorry for the delay.
Sorry about that. Doesn't happen very often.
Two weeks.
It's the first time in three years for me.
Yeah. Ah, you too, thank you.
I was trying to hold it together and not hack away.
Sorry, gentlemen. Unfortunately, everybody else gets sick. We tried to call somebody in, and they were all like, well, I'm sick.
On behalf of this... 603. 33091, that's my cell. If you need to talk to me about issues. I know you've been out, so. You know, we're dealing with Sammy, but you can't push her or Sammy right now. Sammy's not, you know, he's got problems. I'm sure you're aware of it.
Oh, yeah.
We support that basketball team, too. Over the years, I'm with the kids.
Yeah.
I don't know what he's going to do. He had no answers.
Yeah. I know. They're trying everything. Okay. Yep, thank you. Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is acceptance of the meeting minutes from October 24th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Barbara.
Second.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Masham?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Ms. Moran? Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Next, approval of the NEPR manifest. So the total of this period was 637 and 69 cents, which is a slew of things, the applications in front of us, and some mileage, and mailing, et cetera.
Motion to approve is stated.
Second. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Masham?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Jim, do you want to discuss the 2024 budget and schedule?
You all received in your packet the schedule for next year. You notice it fits on one small page now. It used to be an 11 by 17, however, I discovered by putting out there the deadlines for when I had to send out a butter notices, people sort of assumed, oh, I can move my deadline to, you know, as long as I get it there by, and I kept having to tell people, no. So this way, they just know when the public hearing is and when the deadline is. And it specifically says on here, "Application deadline is at noon on the date shown. New paperwork for meetings must be submitted by noon on the Thursday prior to the meeting." Both places where it says noon is in capital letters, and when I print it out to stick it up downstairs, I will use red ink. One date is uncertain. If you notice, there are already two dates that are lost to elections. One is the town voting, and the other is the state primary. What I believe, the presidential primary will be held on January 23rd. That has not yet been confirmed. If it is, that will strike a third meeting for the year due to elections. But I like my life better than to ask Mary Jo what she knows. So there should be a motion to adopt the calendar. Excuse me?
The red lettering, can you make it bold as well?
No problem.
Can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
That the application material be submitted prior than the Thursday before the meeting? I say that for both selfish reasons and general reasons. That does not allow a lot of time for me or Mike Fignelli or any other consultants you hire or the board a lot of time to review it. You have every right to require that materials be submitted with the application at least 21 days prior to the meeting. You can do less if you want. You could do a week, or like, if Jim is in on a Monday versus that Thursday, so you have a little bit more time. It seems like a good opportunity to slightly increase that timeframe to allow for more thorough review.
I totally agree.
Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I can convert that to, I mean, the deadline is actually like three weeks before the public hearing, so the deadline for the application is okay. However, the new paperwork must be submitted by noon on the Monday the week prior to the meeting. That gives...
I'm trying to think of the things to simplify that so it's less...
Convoluted.
Yes.
So I do have some municipalities that will say that all new applications and materials, so it's everything, must be submitted, it's about the 21 days prior to the meeting. They'll make small exceptions for like small bits of paperwork. Any continued applications must submit new information 10 days, two weeks prior to the next meeting. So I would have longer for new applications, and maybe that Monday before, the week before the hearing, or the continuation, then the new material has to be put in.
I can work up language, but that would actually require a change to your rules of procedure.
Wait, and we can just vote, correct?
Yes. But let me come up with some proper language so that...
I would definitely be keeping the applications, given the fact that it's meetings every two weeks, 21 days makes sense.
Yep. And I don't have to have this out until December 14th? Well, actually, December 12th would be nice, because that's a couple of days before the first deadline that's listed on it. And since things seem to be coming in still fairly hot and heavy, I will do my best to get this all done for the next, for the 28th. Next item is the budget, which I am presenting to the Selectmen tomorrow night. As you can see, it is, we were given an instruction to increase our salaries to a number that is realistic to try to retain or try to hire in somebody new at this position. I just know what the salaries are, because I talk with my confers around the area. I couldn't put that number in here because the Selectmen would just laugh. However, that at least brings this position up a little closer to, not necessarily comparables, but...
Less ridiculous.
Excuse me?
Less ridiculous.
Like I said in my email, and I wasn't being really facetious, but with the training I'm required to take and what have you, I should make more than a custodian. I mean, we have a really good one, but... So I put in, you know, what I felt was a realistic number. As you can see, we've already over-expended that budget line for this year, and that takes into account that over expenditure. However, our budget is, we're still 15,000, a little over 15,000 in money left. I still, this year, I will have, there'll be more advertising, because I have to advertise for public hearing on the first meeting in December. We have office supplies and postage to buy, which I have traditionally bought at the end of the year. I've always, whenever I could, shifted costs where it's legal to do so, to have the applicants pay for certain things. They can't pay for everything. I've removed the telephone line because it's no longer, that's now handled differently. Considering the number of new people that are on the board, I've left the, when we discussed this last year, we had discussed taking $100 out of training. I put that back in, because NHMA courses are now $90 a person. So that would allow basically four people to attend, and who knows what it could, you know, that gives a little squeaking room in case they go up to $100 bucks next year. The travel expenses, if we have four people going to NHMA classes next year, that could be, that could easily be $100 to $150. The 6733, there was my travel time to attend the Housing Academy. I won't be doing that again next year, because that was a one-shot deal, but, you know, you figure, assuming people don't carpool, $200 is not an awful lot for travel expenses. I did, if you flip the budget over, you have my justifications that I'll be giving tomorrow night. Either way, we're still at $3,910 over this year's budget.
What's in the circuit rider contract, too, that's, we're supposed to be making another payment before the end of the year, so some of that overage is going to come out of this after that, correct?
Yes, and actually, we should all grovel at Ms. Rowden's feet for the fact that she has done a very good job of trying to maintain. They now bill us for actual hours. They now bill us for actual hours. And until I have a couple of billing cycle, a couple of annual cycles in, I can't say what the, the actual circuit rider contract could be. But remember, a lot of the stuff that is being, that's being paid for by the HOP grant eliminated the need for us, for the planning board to spend its consulting services. And it's probably picked up some of what we normally would look at Ms. Rowden and say, can you work on this? So that, I don't have enough history of the, the new billing system to say whether or not that variance is an anomaly that is going to disappear next year or that is going to be something in the long range that we, you know, that we can look at and potentially reduce. However, I do know that the dues and subscriptions are going up next year. That's the, our IPC dues. Manuels are, have almost maxed out what we budget for them. There's 15 bucks left that could very easily disappear. Like I said, postage is something I've been trying to get as many applicants to have to pay for. But I will be going out. Last year at this time of year, I bought roughly, for the planning board, $200 worth of postage. I still have a few stamps left, but during the year, just the off things of sending out mailings and what have, one-off mailings, you know, paying the board's bills, that is used up. That, so that will, that will be going down.
Do we have, like Janet check, mail it to her? Is that all electronic?
Excuse me?
Like consultants fees, are we electronic, are we paying those bills?
No, taking turns. That, that's the, the system of downstairs, that's not through us. When I can, like, these, these packets, the applicant who has the bulk of these packets paid for me to drive around and it's on the manifest, to drive around and deliver the packets that did not get picked up at the last meeting.
It's cheaper than mailing now.
Well, considering the fact that each one of those packets would have cost almost $25 to mail. I'm sure somebody's going to complain, a certain applicant may complain that, you know, they paid me to drive them around, but it was cheaper to drive them around. The next, for the next meeting, there's a, another application that came in that will be on the next agenda for a ADU. That's thin, but that applicant will pay for me to mail out those packets. However, every time I get something back from the county that I then have to mail, like Mr. Norman's voluntary lot merger. When that paperwork gets returned from the county, I put in his copy in an envelope and mail it to him. I can't charge them for that stamp. Because I don't have a way of charging for individual stamps. When I take packets to the post office, nice, I get a nice receipt. I'm not going to start collecting 66 cent receipts. So there's a, there is, there's a balance between what is practical and what is not. So every time I send out notice of decision, goes in an envelope, 66 cent stamp goes on it, it goes out. Eventually, I'll work out with the treasurer so that the... There's a fee that we charge every applicant, which accounts amounts to 75, 75 cents per check. And that is going into a special NIPR account that eventually I'll be able to pull the postage out of. But for right now, that number has not gotten high enough to cover what we use for postage. Other than that, everything, I mean, everything here is very simple.
Okay.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions on the budget?
I have none, I think. Year after year, we operate pretty lean.
Family's been around these parts for the past 400 years.
Yeah, just one of the things that we're trying to do with the, with the budgets is that we're trying to keep them realistically. And I know that some things fluctuate and stuff. But these huge, and part of what the townspeople, I think annoy them and why they have no problem going to default is at the end of the year, when there's always money that we say, you know, we're trying to get money put into the budget, but yet we end up putting money into our fund because some budgets tend to go over a little bit more than what they should on some things. And I know which, we changed the circuit rider. It's not a straight contract like we used to pay, right? So now it's hourly. So even looking at the comparison at this, and I know like you're saying, to be able to look at a few cycles, but we're looking at, we're already halfway through this month. We have a month and a half left and we've only used a quarter, 25% of that budget line. I feel as though we could cut that in half and still have enough money if you want to leave the consulting services the way that it is. And then that way there, if need be, we could tap into that money if we ended up having to pay Jen extra money for her services.
That's completely up to the planning board. In the past, we always paid the circuit rider, it was always based on hourly, but it was based on hourly for X number of meetings a year, whether we had them or not. Now it's based on hourly's as to actuals. And remember, she now segregates general planning board costs versus application-specific costs. So this year, absolutely. For the application that was represented tonight?
Yep.
The first time it came through, that applicant paid, I believe it was almost $2,000 in circuit rider costs that came off of that $995. Sorry, that... They paid for that. The other applications, like I said, where I can legally do so, I have been billing the circuit rider costs to them. However, if we don't have a large application, I can't look at somebody like the ADU that's coming in next week and go, yes, you owe us $42 for the circuit rider. That is part of the planning board. It's when something goes above and beyond the average. Like, if you remember, there was...
I understand that, Jim, but what I'm saying though is, so if we cut that in half and then we, we hit that light on them, right? And we start to go over. The selectmen have overall what the total number was approved at. So we can move money from one line to another to pay for something. So we would be able to take money out of the consultant services to pay the circuit rider contract. So what I'm saying, right? Exactly. So what I'm saying is we need to stop having too much so that we continue to have these huge overages at the end of the year. So we want to, we want to bring these, and that was part of what we were talking about, bring them more into the realistic line. It's going to be a little tighter. We're not going to have like a huge, you know, archway to walk through. That door frame's going to close a little bit, which is what we need to do for the townspeople. But it's what we need to do. Realistically. And that's why we, we talked about bringing up the pay wages to where they should be. But this is what we want when these budgets come in. I'm just telling you.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just, and I'm not really defending this particular budget, but there are certain line items like I took $1,000 out of legal.
Yep.
So Kim?
Personally, I would, I would...
Can I ask you, can I ask a question? Bob, what number were you, what number were you saying that you should take that budget number down to? Because right now it's $12,945. What are you saying?
I'm saying we could cut that in half and make it 6,500.
6,500? 6,500?
Can we just, does it, do we have to have a circuit rider line item and a consultant service line item? Or can we just do outside consulting services? And just leave it at 10 or 11.5?
Can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
And how you have your line items, and that's totally up to the board. But for the 11 years I've worked with Newton, your budget for circuit riding, the number of hours you've sort of allocated has always run, you know, nine, 10, 11, 12. It's gone up over the years. You've come very close to using that funding very consistently. Just at this point, you're charging some of that money back to the applicants. But you've used that amount of time. You know, whether you consult, call it circuit riding or consultant fees, that's, that's up to the board. But consulting fees in the past for doing things like assistance with your CIP, assistance with doing ordinance work, with doing master plan work. So just historically, you might want to keep that. I mean, I'm hoping we're successful with the Aquifer ordinance budget and we have some housing stuff, but you typically haven't had enough funding to be able to do projects. So I just throw, throw that out there as proof of thought.
And there are actually, I should say, there are actually probably two more payments due out of this year's funds. One of our problems is the fact that I should be getting this week, September and October's circuit rider bill. It usually comes out in the middle of the month. And then in January, I get November, December's. This is the first year, and that's one of the reasons that we haven't used that much. We didn't pay one in January for November, December of '22. That bill with the then bookkeeper got billed to 20, out of the '22 budget.
Because we had additional money back in '22 and we pre-billed.
Right. So that's why I'm, I'm saying we haven't had enough cycles. I want to see how it works. Once everything has been shaken out and we have somebody permanent and they're running a system downstairs. Because I will admit, you can probably take 3,000 out of that. But I wouldn't go as high as 6 because you could then end up missing your budget. And what happens is a year from now, you've got to put 6,000 back into that budget. It's six of one, half does of the other, how angry you make people. I mean, it's, you know, if you look at me and say you want the $3,910 to go away, I'll figure out how to do it.
I, I get your point, Bob. You want the, so I'll say right now, year-to-date, we spent 30 grand, I'll say.
Yep.
But realistically, we didn't spend 30,000 because we, Jen, if you, do you remember the dollar value? We pre-billed, it was like 6 grand?
It wasn't that much. It was like 1,300 or something like that.
So we're, realistically, we're at 30, I'll say 32,000. But we really should capture that and straighten this out and stop playing the game. Is that what you're saying, from year to year? And they just, if, you know, the planning board does it, the zoning board does it, the fire department does it, we could actually have a real, realistic budget for once? Okay. Now I get what you're saying.
And just so you know, last year's, the budget that didn't make it through because, you know, went to a default instead, was actually $2,500, it was just over 50,000. So half of what you're seeing for an increase here is probably going to be taken up by the salary line working out through the end of the year.
So now I wish I had like five years' worth of data and then just run this with like a CIP or the consumer inflation index. And then just like, what do we typically spend a year, like 35,000?
Excuse me?
How much money are we spending year to year if we trended this out over a couple of years?
Year to year, we're returning, I'd have to double check the figures, but approximately $7,500. Usually, we do not use most of the legal funds. And consultant services is iffy.
Okay.
Like I said, when it comes to office supplies and postage, those I buy at the end of the year when I know that the budget has survived. Because that's something, if need be, I can beg for stamps.
So you, the board of selectmen would rather have each committee, board, department lock in their number as close as they can? And then if we need to go beg for more because we need legal fees this year?
That's it. That's what we're doing with the fire department. He came the last meeting, wanting us to approve. And we said, no, you're going to stay in the red just so we can see how far in the red you go. We have the actual dollar figure instead of just throwing money into the account. Because until the townspeople see the, what's actually, the department by department, what's getting spent. Because when the town reports go out, the, anybody that looks at them and looks over them, like I said, they see that we're trying to go up on the budget and they don't understand why when they see money getting put into that other account.
Now please remember also that for the past couple of years, the planning board has been generating revenue that never gets applied against our, it shows up in, in the book, but it never gets applied as planning board expendable monies. It goes into the general. It goes into the general fund. Last year, this year, it's been in excess of 5,000.
Right, but that's revenue generated. We're talking about from the budget.
Yeah, well, it's, it's up to, if the board wishes me to, I will.
When do you need this in front of the, excuse me? You need to put this in front of the Board of Selectmen tomorrow?
Tomorrow night.
Oh geez.
Just get a clarification on something, just want to understand it. You're getting money for, let's say, the circuit rider contract from the developers, correct?
Right.
Okay. Now, and you said the smaller ones, you wouldn't be able to get that money. So as part of this, in other words, the expense actually would be higher than this if, if you weren't getting the money in.
Yes, by probably about 3,000.
3,000, okay. All right, I'm just wondering what happens if you don't get a lot of, you know, any big contracts during the course of the year, any big developments?
We go over budget and then we have to go back to the selectmen.
Okay.
And the money that's being actually generated from the planning board should probably be put in a revolving fund for the planning boards. Hence that way there, you could cut back on some of this stuff and then if none, if money, yeah, none, if money needed to be, we would be able to take it out of that fund and put it into where it needs to be for the planning board.
That would be really nice. Technically, the application fee is supposed to pay, my sal, is supposed to go to offset In reviewing, and usually I do that for the first meeting after election, is the fee schedule. In the past, I've managed to find areas where that I could increase those fees, the application fees. However, and it's something, as long as I've been on the planning board, it always drove me a little crazy with the fact that, oh gee, we just did four public hearings. Tonight's public hearings between those three applications tonight, I believe one was 2,400, one was 1,500, and I can't remember. But the, the two 125 development ones, I believe were fairly good size application. You know, I'd have to double check the numbers. But it's, it's one of those things that, okay, if there's $4,000 that was just sitting here, standing here tonight, think of all the other large ones that we've had in the past. And that money just, it comes in, it goes in, I, I hand it over to the town administrator and it just disappears.
Well, that's why I said a revolving fund. Has anybody thought of that? Making a, setting a revolving fund for the planning board so that that money that's generated from the planning board would go into that? And then that would be money that would be able to be accessed by the planning board, strictly by the planning board, rather than being put into the general fund.
I'm ju, I'm just not certain how it would be, it could be applied.
No, um, so the application fees, as Jim said, should go to be paying him, sort of the third party review that you can charge for my time reviewing applications. But Bob, something that is often done, is sort of like your consulting fee. Um, instead of that as the line item, sometimes we'll do and put five or 10,000 and they'll put into their master plan and special studies revolving fund so that that, and then they can save up for a few years to do sort of like big, bigger projects as needed. So it's kind of a similar idea, but not quite, I think, what you were talking about.
Would, from an accounting standpoint, I'm guessing we track what the planning board is, I'll say the planning board is bringing, taxpayers are paying the town. And my guess is I'm missing the bigger picture for the planning board, it's relatively small, but across the town, you want some initial accountability or understanding of where funds are coming from.
Well, present it tomorrow night as is. It's, it's the first, and then we'll be going back over them all again anyways, one more time.
I mean, if, if the board wants me to change it, I, I have time tonight.
I think I would really like some additional information for like a couple previous years. But I, I understand exactly your point is wise. It's greater accountability for each board department at the border, the selectman level to say, you know, what's happening with this money versus us. I mean, we as a board right now, we have, and we have $13,000 in our budget right now, we could go out and spend it if we decide. I mean, the planning board doesn't buy anything, so it's different.
Right.
But if we wanted, I don't know, Jim wants me furniture in the office, I guess we as a board could decide to spend that money right now, correct? It's already authorized for the planning board.
And that's what we tried to do last year, right? Was it last year or the year before about paying something?
Exactly. We paid, I think it was a prudent use of the initial funds. We, how we operate right now is we prepay or pay some of Jen's contracts out of the previous year's budget to make things meet better.
Right, to use the money that's in there.
And we, we, we did that when we were working on, when the planning board was working on the CIP, oh, sorry, the master plan. We knew that it was a, it was running from over two budget cycles. So they prepaid, it was like 1,500 towards the master plan contract in December out of the, um.
That's what it was.
The year to, year to date variance. Other than one item that I know isn't on here, but will be coming out of the office supplies, and that is the Adobe subscription, which I have to, that, that gets renewed in December, but the bill doesn't come in until January. And then it gets kicked back and taken out of this year's, because it was expended this year, but because the bill doesn't. You know, if you want, I can go down and see if I can, can zero out this.
You don't want to zero out anything. You always want to leave at least one dollar in a line item.
No, no, no. What I meant is the, the variance down in the corner, the 3,910. It will be tricky. It'll mean cuts in areas that we probably would want to avoid, but, um, you know, I thought I was doing well at only putting 5K into the salary line, because with what I was instructed, for the number of hours I do a week, that should be probably 10 to 15, simply because I know what I've been offered to go elsewhere. I'm not planning on leaving Newton, but I mean, small towns around here are just having to bite the bullet.
Or maybe that's a, you know, reducing the budget to where we, year to year have been operating and then increasing that at a more appropriate rate.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I can go in and get that 3,910.
So tomorrow, the board's selecting, Jim presents, you guys review, and you gotta kick it back to each department?
Yep. Yeah, so it doesn't have to get, this doesn't have to be approved tonight. I mean, you can present it, we'll look at it, it'll get back to you, and then it'll come before us one more time for approval.
Does anybody other than Bob seeing anything they want to see different? Not picking on you, Bob. Just maybe finding out if somebody else looked at and went, you know, why are we doing this to that line?
I have no comments. I think this was a good discussion and.
Could you look over here when you talk? Oh, yeah, yeah, I, you're not picking up on the mic very well.
Probably because I was on mute because I've been coughing, so I've been trying to miss that. Or exclude that from everybody. I don't have any additional items to add or topics, but I think this was a good discussion to have, and you know, this isn't direct or isn't only related to the planning board. It's just general town operations to try to nail down budgets and, you know, figure out where the money is being spent in town. If, you know, if we need more money for the planning board, so be it. But if, you know, year after year, it doesn't, it seems like we are proposing a budget that is more money than we need.
So why, I, excuse me. A five-year look back or a three-year look back would be good. That way we could see what we're spending every single year and see what the uptick is, you know, percentage wise, that we could predict, and, and that would be a great starting
I could do that if the man in the middle says, oh, I don't mind if you go, you hit 40 hours a couple of weeks in a row. It's just, it's literally with the number of applications, once again, this year is probably going to be the highest number of applications the planning board has had, period.
And then you, obviously you'd build it, it's tiny buffer and then just try to adhere to everything.
But what I, what I'm hearing from Jim, uh, I'm sorry, Bob, is that we're forecasting the best we can based on the information we have. And if we need to adjust, like if there's, if we run in the red a hundred dollars for 2024, so be it. And we'll, you know, adjust that. But if we run in the red like 10,000 and it's because we have legal fees for something, then there's a reason for that. And that may not be the reason to adjust our budget. It's just an unforeseen event that goes to the general fund that we got to cover and move on. But that doesn't mean our, our operating budget should increase and then therefore we have an inflated operating budget. And that's not specific to the planning board. That's for the fire department, the police department, highway, road.
Exactly. Because unforeseen things, they happen.
But it's just to get a good handle on what we're spending week to week or year to year.
Right.
And one thing where you mentioned the salary line, since we went to a default last year, I was told by the corner office to not expend any more time than is absolutely necessary statutorily. So I had a goal for this year. I've done almost no work on it because that would have bumped that number closer to the 23,000 that we had originally budgeted for, for this year.
That no work on what?
Excuse me?
You said you were told and did no work on what?
To stick to only the hours that were absolutely necessary to keep the planning board functioning.
Right, because we were put on the default budget.
Right. So what you see there is, you know, files have been maintained, but the, the backlog of stuff that needs to be straightened out has not been done. The plan database, I've been adding stuff as new stuff comes in, but I haven't been able to do any of the historical stuff because those are, a certain amount of time sinks.
So based on our current budget, it looks like you have time for the remaining year to go start taking care of some of that? We have a surplus of money from now to January.
Yes.
So it's probably a good time for you to maybe check off some of those boxes.
As long as you don't mind that line going well into the red.
Um, I, how do I want to say this? I think if there's, if it's a legitimate use of your time and we have money in the budget and there's results and, you know, it's, I'll just reiterate, a good use of your time, if that one line item goes over, I think I'm okay with it and it's a justifiable use.
And again, that line item goes over budget, it just comes before the selectmen and the selectmen approve, approve it and the funds will be paid because like Dennis said, there's money elsewhere in the budget to be able to pay for that. And then like we were, we're sitting here stating, we get a truer understanding of what's taking place, which then justifies your raise and why your salary should be up to where it is in the line item.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I'm doing my best, but you never know. But no, I, I don't get very much feedback, so I, I never know.
Yep.
Other than, you know, every now and then I hear comments from downstairs about, gee, Jim, you know, your last pay, pay round, you were a little high, weren't you? I'm like, no, I had, as Dennis can tell you, I may spend all Sunday doing, um, a butter prep.
Watching football.
Oh, no, I just, I just sent out another 200 and something of butter notices. You know, that takes time.
Nobody knows what you do until you don't do it.
Yeah. Well, that's exactly it, absolutely. So do you want me to present the budget as it's proposed tomorrow night?
I think you could present that you had initial discussions with the board and that we're still trueing up the budgets based on our conversation.
Okay.
Unless somebody overrides me or disagrees with me.
Well, that's, I, I, I'm trying to get a consensus here of what, where people want the budget to be.
I, I think it should accurately reflect what we've been spending year to year. And then, you know, if you need some additional time to take care of some other items, build that into that line item for 2024, given that we have a surplus of funds in the 2023 budget, you know, let's try to tackle some of that right now if we want to, I mean, we've, that money's already earmarked, correct, Bob? So it's like, if we want to pre, I'm going to say this right now and then I'm going to ask a question. If we want to prepay or use some of the money for 2024 circuit rider and then contract and out of 2023's budget and then realize that when we set the budget for 2024, that we did that, so that 2025, it should increase by X number of dollars plus inflation, I think I'm okay with that too.
You can, you can only save money from this year to spend next year if you have a bill in hand to pay. We have until, you have until December. We have until, you have until December 14th, I believe, I'd have to double check the email, to put in for that indemnification.
I'm sure Jen, or Jen's people at her office could send us a billy bill for like, $2,000.
We can, we can figure out something for you guys, if that will be helpful.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I can send Annette an email on Thursday, and I'm sure she can give me an, you know, give me a bill in time, so that I can present it to the Selectmen, and say, we'll pay that out of this year's...
I know in my position, I love when I pre-bill clients.
Okay. All right, then I will present this as is, with my, did everybody understand my justifications of each line?
Yes.
You know, some unknowns, known costs. Okay, so I will work on, a little bit more on the schedule, just for the wordings, and I will present this tomorrow night, this is the, I'm doing the planning board ZBA, and trustees of the trust funds.
Did the ZBA discuss their budget as in detail as we did?
For the first time in its history, the ZBA is coming in at the end of the year in the black, may not be a lot, but it's in the black. Last year, we were real close, I think we went in the red like, $240, this year, I think we may, the ZBA may have like, $240 left, but I also haven't bought their postage or their office supplies.
Okay, next item is, invest New Hampshire update and master plan housing chapter, public engagement, Jen, you said you could do this in 15 seconds?
I said 30 seconds. Yeah, we're going to work on having the public engagement event ideally mid to late January, we'll try to get past zoning season, to try and do a little bit more outreach with some of the housing stuff, and we'll be talking about the master plan chapter wrap-up, and probably not on 1/28, but the next opportunity, we have half an hour on the planning board agenda between now and January.
Okay.
And I will be posting the public hearing for the change to the zoning language for the December 12th meeting, Jen, do you have a copy of the full wording?
For the flooding? Yes, I can forward it to you.
Okay, I just, when that posts, they have to be able to come here, and I have to post on the bulletin board downstairs, the, the full language.
Yep, although it's also in your email, but I'll send it to you again.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, food for thought, the second meeting in December is December 26th, the day after Christmas.
I'll probably be here, hopefully I'm not sick. I just have one request, Jim, when you pull the agenda together for next meeting, can you put, just so this is correct, the continuation for 1/25 is A, and then B, the reapplication?
Well, the next meeting with what's happened tonight, you'll have four public hearings, you have an ADU, you have the Norman...
Yep.
You have the four-building, and then the 24-bedroom residential.
Yep, I was just requesting to put the 2-125 development projects...
Do you want to move those first?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just because, and I, I see Mr. McDonough is still there, just to, out of courtesy, just because we were unable to hear your project tonight.
Now, do I have your permission to put the new, the ADU?
Thank you, I appreciate that, Thomas.
On Amesbury Road, put that first, because that should be fairly simple?
I was, given the amount of people attending, I was thinking to holding that later.
Okay.
I think there'll be less public attendance for the, that project, so...
No, no problem, I will.
The other three applications, it seems like there's a 10 or 15 residents for both projects, so... Does anybody have anything else? Nope. Jen, you good? Barbara, Emily, Andrew, hope everybody feels better.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Adjourned at 9:24.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.